Welcome to the Namaste children, welcome to the Sanskriti session. All of you have enjoyed the long holidays and all that and Sri Ram, Uddhaka and Sri Ram Mandir Uddhaka and all, everybody must have enjoyed, no? So today we will after the prayers, we will chant Namaramayana, okay? Now first, I will chant two lines and then you can repeat, Likita, okay? Um, vakratunta mahakaya, suryakoti sama prabha. Nirvignam kurumeh deva, sarvakade shusarvada.
Vakratunta mahakaya, suryakoti sama prabha. Same prabha, nirvignam. Kurumeh devi deva. Sarvakade shu. Sarvakade shu. Sarvada.
Very good. Next one Saraswati, okay? Saraswati, yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
You can do quarter by quarter, she is.
Yes ma'am, yes, she is new actually, for her it is new. Once more we will do. Vakratunta mahakaya.
Vakratunta mahakaya.
Suryakoti sama prabha.
Suryakoti sama prabha.
Nirvignam kurumeh deva.
Nirvignam kurumeh deva.
Sarvakade shu sarvada.
Sarvakade shu sarvada.
Very good. Next one Saraswati. Saraswati namastubhyam.
Saraswati namastubhyam.
Varadeka marupini.
Varadeka marupini.
Vidyarambam karishyami.
Vidyarambam karishyami.
Siddhir bhavatume sadha.
Siddhir bhavatume sadha.
Next Guru. Gurur brahma, gurur vishnuhu.
Gurubrahma, guruvishnuhu.
Gurur devo maheshwara.
Gurur devo maheshwara.
Gurusatshat parabrahma.
Gurushatkat.
Satshat.
Satshat parabrahma.
Tasmai shigurave namaha.
Tasmai shigurave namaha.
Very good Likita, these three prayers, every class, every Sanskriti class, we will chant in the first, okay? You can practice of your own, huh? Now, we will start with Namaramayana, first ten slogans by Kushi. Kushi, are you ready?
Yes ma'am.
You have to do of your own, first you have to start with Rama Rama jaya raja ram, Rama Rama jaya seeta ra.
Okay. Rama Rama jaya raja ram, Rama Rama jaya seeta ra. Shuddha brahma parat para ram, kalatmak parameshvara ram. Sheeshatalpa sukamitra tarah, brahmadyamara pratitara. Chandakiranakulamandana ram, shri madasharatanandanaram. Kausalyasukavardhana ram, visvamitra priyadanaram. Gora thataka ghatakaram, mari chadini patakaram.
Excellent Kushi, you have practiced very well, very nice, thank you. Next eleven to twenty Vishruta.
Kausikamakasamrakshakaram, shri madahilyodarakaram. Gautamamuni sampujitararam, suramuni varaganasamstutararam. Naavikadhaavitamridupadararam, mitila purjanamohakaram. Seetarpitamvaramahlikaram, kritavai vahekaautukaram.
Very good, that in between what is that trayambakar mukha bhanjakaram. Say Vagi. Trayambakar.
Kar mukha.
Kar mukha. Kar mukha. Mukha.
Trayambakar mukha bhanjakaram.
Ah, very good, okay, thank you Vishruta, next one Sai Nishat.
Okay ma'am. Bhargavadarpa vinashakaram, shri madayodiyapalakaram. Rakachandra samanana ram, utravashitakamanaram. Friyabuhavini veditapadararam, takshalitanijamrudupadararam. Bharadvajamukhananda karam, sidrakota darini ketanaram.
Okay, very good, next Virat. Actually Krishna was to come next, I don't know Krishna is there?
Ma'am, ma'am, next is me.
Yeah, next Krishna, okay.
Dasharat santatasintitaram, kekaitrannaya arthitaram. Rama rama jaya raja ram, rama rama jaya seeta ram. Sarvva, sarvva vanga sutrisna arshitaram, agastyanuragvardhitaram.
Panchavati, panchavati tata sustitara.
Panchavati tata sushitaram.
Okay, thank you Krishna, next Virat. Shurpanaka.
Seetapithaharinanugaram, mari charthikrta sugaram. Shabari dhatthafalasanaram, kapandabahu chedanaram. Anumatsevitanijpadaram, netasukhriva bishkadaram.
Next, Vi Vaishnavi is there? Saumya, is she present?
Ah, no ma'am, she is not.
No, no, okay, so anybody can repeat after me? This fifty-one to sixty, who is ready, who is coming forward?
Ma'am, this is Nikita.
Ah, Likita, Nikita?
Nikita.
Nikita, Nikita, you can do this Garvita or you have to repeat.
Ma'am, I'll do this.
Okay, then start fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Garv.
Garvitvalisamarakaram, vanaraduta preshakaram.
Hitakara. Sorry. Hit, hitakara.
Hitakara lakshmana sammyutara. Kapivara sanatana samshritara.
Tatgadi?
Tatgadi vighnha.
Dwam, dwam sakara.
Sakara. Seeta pranadharakaram.
Dushthadasanana?
Seeta anumat bhushitara.
Shishtha, shishtha anumat.
Shishtha anumat bhushitara.
Seeta vedita?
Seeta veditaka, kakavanaram.
Kritachooda mani?
Kritachooda manidarshanaram.
Okay, thank you, next, Lasya is there? Lasya?
Lasya also is not there.
Absent, okay.
This is Hasini.
Hasini, yeah, Hasini, you can repeat. Rakshita, okay, I will give a chance to Rakshita also, okay, after, um, Hasini. Rama rama jaya raja rama, rama rama jaya seeta rama.
Rama 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 jaya raja rama, rama rama jaya seeta rama.
Ravananidana prastitaram.
Ravananidaya prastitaram.
Parvatasetuni bandakaram.
Parvatasetuni bandakaram.
Kumbakarnasiracheda karam.
Kumbakarnasiracheseda karam.
Thank you Hasini, next who is going to Alantiar, next ten slogans. Rakshita is there? Rakshita, huh? Okay. Hmm.
Samskita das, ma'am, can you repeat?
Not samstita, sorry, khastita, khastitadasharatvikshitaram. Pushpakayana rohana rama.
Pushpakayana rohana rama.
Bharadvajadi nishavanaram.
Bharadvajadi nishedanaram.
Bharata prana priyakara rama.
Bharata prana priyakara rama.
Saketa puri bhushanaram.
Saketa puri bhushanaram.
Ratnastapita stitaram, ratnalastapita stitaram.
Ratnalastapita shritaram.
Patta bishekalam kritaram.
Patta bishekalam kritaram.
Thank you, next, another ten slogans. Virat, now instead of repeating Saketh, can you do? Saketh or Siddharth, both of you can do ten ten slogans each.
Yes ma'am.
Ah, ready?
Ma'am.
Hmm.
Ma'am, you had told me to present.
I, I know, I know, because no, at that time, that day nobody was there, so I told you to repeat. Today since other children are there, they can have a chance, no, that's right. Okay, thank you Siddharth, now let us go to Saketh, ready Saketh?
Yes ma'am.
Keeshakulaanugrahakara rama.
Keeshakulaanugrahakara rama.
Rama rama jaya raja rama.
Rama rama jaya raja rama.
Rama rama jaya seeta rama.
Rama rama jaya seeta rama.
Agatamuni ganesamstutararam.
Agatamuni ganesamstutararam.
Seetalingana nirvritaram.
Ma'am, can you repeat again?
Seetalingana?
Seetalingana?
Nirvritaram.
Nirvritaram.
Thank you, you are Siddharth?
Ma'am, Siddhu will tell now.
Siddhu will tell now, Saketh has done it, okay.
Ma'am, can you repeat once, I didn't get the first one.
Karitalava, karitalavana suravadaram.
Karitalavana vadasuraram.
Lavana suravadaram.
Karitalavana suravadaram.
Svargatasambuka samstutararam.
Svargatasambuka samstutararam.
Tejo mayanijaruukakaram.
Tejo mayanijaruukakaram.
Samshritibandavi mochakaram.
Samshritibandavi mochakaram.
Thank you, now last eight. Anybody?
Yes come, ma'am.
Vi Vaishnavi has come. Vi Vaishnavi, okay, but her stances are over, Vi Vaishnavi, can you chant hundred and one to hundred and eight of your own or you can repeat?
Ma'am, I can repeat it.
You can repeat, okay, hundred and one, huh? Bhaktiparayana mukhitaram.
Bhaktiparayana mukhitaram.
Nityananda padastitaram.
Nityananda padastitaram.
Rama rama jaya raja rama.
Rama rama jaya raja rama.
Rama rama jaya seeta rama.
Rama rama jaya seeta rama.
All of you can repeat once more in your muted place. Rama rama jaya raja rama, rama rama jaya seeta rama.
Rama rama jaya raja rama, rama rama jaya seeta rama.
Thank you children, you all will get Rama's blessing, thank you. Now I am handing over to Sudha and Saumya ma'am.
Om children, so two days back, we all celebrated our seventy-fifth Republic Day. I'm sure you would all have watched the parade on the TV, did you all get a chance to watch?
We all watched the parade.
Happy months.
Raise your hand.
In our apartment, we had, we had celebrate.
The same time, okay.
Afterwards also.
Same apartment.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so during Republic Day, you tell me, so the president we all know, so does the president hoist the flag or unfurls the flag?
You know the difference between hosting a flag and unfolding a flag?
We unfold, we unfold. And first.
Yeah, so during Independence Day, the flag is raised, okay? And during Republic Day, the flag is unfolded from the top itself, it is tied with flowers on the top and it is only unfolded by the president, okay? So this time since many of you did not watch the parade, but if still I want to ask, do you know who the chief guest was this time during the parade, Republic Day parade?
France Prime Minister.
French President, yes.
In Macron.
Hmm, yes, right, it is Emmanuel Macron, French President, even the French contingent also participated in the parade, okay? And that was, and again, do you also know, what was, what were the themes of the Republic Day parade this time? If.
Women empowerment.
Yes, one of them was women empowerment, was Nari Shakti, okay? There are so many interesting things that happened, after this class also, you can find it on YouTube, if you not watched it, go and watch. There was a Hawahan musical presentation by around hundred and twelve women, that the parade started with that. And after that, you know, this time, around two sixty-five women, they displayed their skill and bravery and valor on motorbikes, you know motorcycle rides. They displayed that and there was a new one forty-four tri-service women contingent introduced. And most of the tableaus and dance performances, they all were showcasing women empowerment and Nari Shakti. There were few more themes of the.
Ma'am, this is Nikita.
Yes Nikita.
So the theme for Republic Day was Viksit Bharat, Bharat Lok Tantra, Mahatruka.
Yes.
Viksit Bharat, yes, Viksit Bharat means our country which is developing or developed, so many developments we see in our Bharat. About the name Bharat, you remember in the last Republic Day, we discussed the two names of our country, which are the two names, one is India, which we normally use. But Bharat is our ancient name, see that name Jambudvi Bhai Bharat Varsha, the name Bharat has been mentioned in many Puranas, Vishnu Puranas, Skandapurana, Vaipurana. Everywhere the name Bharat only is mentioned. See with the name Bharat, immediately we connect with our ancient culture, our heritage, a sense of belongingness comes, you remember many of you gave a presentation also. Whether you prefer the name Bharat or India, how many of you preferred the name Bharat, you remember? You all gave presentations, why you prefer the name Bharat, you all spoke about that, okay? You know the meaning of the name Bharat, bh means light, light of knowledge. And ratha is one who reveals in that knowledge, see in our country, we always give importance to knowledge, what kind of knowledge, spiritual knowledge? So our country is the pioneer in giving spiritual knowledge, so the name Bharat comes from that. And you know it is named after which king, anyone knows? Bharata.
King Bharata.
King Bharata was son of Dushyanta. He was a great ruler, he expanded his kingdom, most part of the Bharat was ruled by him. He had great wisdom, he was a very righteous ruler, that is his dynasty is called Bharat Varsha. Even Khauravas and Pandavas, they belong to that dynasty, that is why our country got the name Bharat. And you know the, in constitution, our Indian constitution accepts both the names. India is also there, Bharat is also there, if you can see any passport, in that also both the names are there, Bharat and India. India came later, British gave that name, but Bharat is our ancient name.
Okay, so I had some more questions to ask, I don't know if you'll be able to answer, but if you don't know, I can also share it with you. There was an installation or a showcasing of, you know, there was something called Ananta Sutra, the endless thread, okay? This was showcased during the Republic Day across, you know, along the Kartavya path. Uh, can, you know, if any of you know what it was, you can tell.
Ma'am, Sharit and Vi Vaishnavi.
Yes Vaishnavi?
Uh, in this Republic Day, we celebrated the theme of Nari to Narani, so they showcased some sarees.
Very good, it was a tribute to the sari, okay, it is, sari is one of the wonderful contributions of India to the fashion of the world, okay? So sari, so they displayed the weavers, especially the women weavers. Who work on all the intricate and the unique designs coming from across different states, that, that, you know, they paid a tribute to those, our sari contribution. And it was called the Ananta Sutra, the entire Kartavya path, along the Kartavya path, there was like around, you know, how many sarees were displayed? There were around thousand nine hundred sarees coming from different states of different weaves where displayed along the Kartavya path, okay? This was one specialty, this Republic Day, very good Vaishnavi. And what was the trending feature of technology, did the Ministry of Electronics and Information showcase in that tableau? There was a tableau from Ministry of Electronics and Information. So one of the trending features of today was displayed in the tableau. Again, if you missed it, go back and see.
I think you all should go back and see, it's available in YouTube.
It was a very interesting parade.
You all watch it, then you can connect with whatever we say now.
AI, artificial intelligence, AI.
Amazing.
Yes, AI was featured this year and there was also a female robot, which was also depicted in the, you know, tableau. Okay, so these are some of the things we should not miss, there are so many other beautiful things, we just wanted to highlight few of them.
Can you say two slogans, famous slogans containing the word Bharat, which we normally tell during Republic Day, Independence Day? Any slogan we say?
Ma'am, can I say?
Ah.
Ma'am, Bharat Mata Ki Jai.
Yes Bharat Mata Ki Jai, we don't say India Mata, no Bharat Mata Ki Jai, anything else?
Vani. Ma'am. Ma'am, Jai Hind, Jai Bharat.
Jai Hind, Jai Bharat.
Mera Bharat Mahan, have you heard of that?
Yes ma'am.
So we should always be proud of our Bharat, that is why we gave you the theme. Dhanya Bharathiya Asmi, I am blessed to be a Bharati, you all should feel, you are blessed to have born in this country. So that is why we asked you to make that slogan, how many of you have come up with that? Made slogans.
Krishna, very good, who else?
Who is ready with the slogan?
Ma'am, I am ready.
Vi Vaishnavi has got a slogan, then?
Ma'am, I am Vishrutha.
Vishruta.
Rakshita also. Okay, we will say here to everybody one by one, Krishna, you can, yeah, you can show your slogan and also read it out for us.
Show your slogan Krishna and explain.
Ma'am, just let me.
Just play that.
Yeah, you just got, take, remove your background so that we can see, yeah.
Uh, ma'am, this is what I need.
Beautiful, it reads Jai. Hmm.
Uh, ma'am, this, and the slogan is, proud to be an Indian I am, where everybody of every religion and every region finds solace.
Again slowly Krishna.
Proud to be an Indian I am, where everyone of every religion and region finds solace.
Very nice, where every person of, irrespective of the region and religion, they find solace in this place, right? So that's why you are proud, beautiful.
Rakshita, Rakshita, you show your slogan. What have you made?
Unmute, are you able to unmute?
Unmute, Rakshita.
She's not able to. Okay, we will listen to Vishruta and come back to Rakshita, yeah Vishruta, show yours. Yeah, bring it close to the camera once. It's nice. Vishruta, can you explain your? Can you explain?
I'm a proud Bharatiya. I'm a proud Bharatiya for many reasons. One of the reasons is, are the variety of the country that it offers almost everything. From mountains to rivers to beaches and from culture to technology to spirituality. So my slogan is, you name it and we have it. Jai Hind.
Very nice. You name it and we have it, right? So there's nothing that you can't find in India, right? There might even be tourism or religion, technology, you name it, we have it. That's a very good slogan.
Got the Chandra in there, very good. No, next who is going to say? Vaishnavi, you are having?
Vivaishnavi has.
Those who have not made it, you can still make it and post it in the group, okay? We want all of you to do something for this.
Beautiful India, very nice. What is written?
What is written there?
Divinity in the air, diversity in culture, rich heritage makes me a proud Indian.
Very good. Remitted once again for everybody to hear once more.
Divinity in the air, diversity in culture, rich heritage makes me a proud Indian.
Beautiful. So all of these make us a proud Indian, yes.
Yes.
Beautiful, very nicely made. Rakshita, are you ready with yours?
Understand Rakshita, anybody is there?
Likita also.
Likita also, very good. Likita, you do it, then we will come to Rakshita. Show yours.
Yes, Likita, you can show yours. Yeah, unmute yourself and show. Yes. Come on. Were able to unmute, Littika, Likita, I'm able to see you raise your hand, but you are muted.
Amma, she sing one minute.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
You are still muted, muted.
Amma, get this drawing.
Beautiful.
I own the temple, beautiful.
Jai Sri Ram.
Jai Sri Ram.
Very nice.
We are proud of this also, definitely.
Beautiful, very beautiful drawing. Very good.
You want to say something about it?
No, ma'am. I just draw it the day before.
Okay. Very nice, very nice. Rakshita, you're able to unmute?
Yeah.
You're not able to unmute? You want to show something? No? It's okay, fine. Anybody else?
Whoever has not done it, please do something and post it in the group.
All of you, even Vishruta, Krishna, Vivaishnavi, everybody, take a photo, picture of it and then post it on the group as well for everybody to see. Very nice, very good slogans. Littika, Likita, Samvedya.
Samvedya, have you made any slogan? Samvedya?
Okay. That's nice. Okay, so next we will want to hear.
Amma.
Hmm?
Actually I just joined right now, Amma.
Okay, okay. No problem, Samvedya. So now we will have some patriotic song presentations. We'll start with Hasini.
One Day Mataram by Hasini. Unmute.
Yeah, Amma. One second, Amma. Vandhe Mataram. Vandhe Mataram. Stujrala, suphala, Malaya Jashitala. Stasya Shyamala, Mataram. Vandhe Mataram. Supra Choshna Pulakitayamini. Sukhadambaradam Mataram Vandhe Mataram.
Very nice.
Very nice, Hasini.
Very nice, Hasini.
Amma, Amma, can I also sing one song?
After, I'll call you.
My sister had drawn a drawing before in older, in younger classes. This was her drawing.
Oh, very good, beautiful.
Is there any slogan?
Um, no, Amma. Okay, okay. Avi? Yes, Nittika?
Um, I was in the school choir this year. They taught us a few patriotic songs. Would it be okay if in the end I sang one of them?
Yes, let us finish with whoever has prepared, then we will call you. There is time, okay?
Good, thank you.
Saketh and Siddharth will present now.
Yes, ma'am. Na 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 ni na. Na na ni na na. Na na ni na na. Na na ni na na. Na 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 na. Desam manade, tejam manade. Desam manade, tejam manade. E guru thunna chenda manade. Neeti manade, jaati manade. Sujala anta danda manade. Andala pandam, undi nela lo. Atmaya nasm, undi galilo. E kulamayana, e matamayana. E kulamayana, e matamayana. Bharata matukkatele ra. Enni deshanana, ma kenne daalana. Desam manade, ekamautta anta ivela. Vandhe Mataram, andaman daram. Vandhe Mataram, oh andaman daram. Yes.
Very nice, very nice.
Both of you sang well.
It's a Telugu song.
Desam manade, nice one. Now next is Ananya.
Ananya, we cannot hear you, you are unmuted. You are unmuted.
Unmute and sing from the beginning.
Unmute, he can't hear. You were, maybe you're not able to, your headphones is not working properly, Ananya. Can you remove that and try singing?
Yes, ma'am.
Now we can hear you.
Sing at the beginning.
Yeah.
Eh vatan vatan mere abad rakh. Eh vatan vatan mere abad rakh tu. Main jahaanam, jahaan pe yaad rakh tu. Main jahaanam, jahaan pe yaad rakh tu. Eh vatan, mere vatan. Eh vatan, mere vatan.
Is it all, Ananya?
Uh, Amma.
Very nice.
Okay.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Whatever you said.
Amma, even I prepared, Amma, even I prepared a song for a school competition can, after everybody is done, even I.
We will give you a chance because we have. Krishna, Nittika, we will give you a chance next week or some other time, let us see because other things also we have to cover, no? Have you come prepared with the answer for that question, if I become Prime Minister?
Yes, ma'am.
Who are all ready with that?
Okay, Krishna can start.
Krishna is there. Okay, Krishna, you start with that.
Uh, Amma, if I were the President of India, uh, sorry, if I were the Prime Minister of India. I would strive to bring like, even today there's, everybody gets the right to read as study, but not many people use the rap. So I would enforce the law that if you don't read to die.
You don't read, you die. That's a very strong one, but it's important. Yes, it is important to enforce the rights that has been given to people and also that. Make sure that people use that right, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Hasini, has to go next. Hasini, okay.
Are you going to answer this, Hasini?
Yes, sir. If I would be the Prime Minister of India, I would have conducted physical education test along with subject tests. I would also keep a mandatory to all the schools over the country, over the country to keep a ground. To keep a ground of the school and conduct PT period every day. If there is no PT period in schools, it affects children's mental and physical fitness. This is what I want to do if I am a Prime Minister. Thank you.
Giving importance to sports.
Physical sports, physical fitness is very important, right? If you are physically fit, it helps you be mentally fit also. Very good. Vivaishnavi has raised her hand, yes.
Amma, if I were the Prime Minister, I would improve the welfare of public such as food, education and employment.
Very good, very nice. Samvedya has raised her hand. Is Samvedya?
Uh, if I become the Prime Minister of India, just like Ramunder and Ayodhya, I would build Mathura. Mathura, Krishna Temple for our country.
Good. And it is also important that, you know, not just temples are built, it is important that. People abide by the values that are, that Rama and Krishna stand for, right? That is more important.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we will got.
Vishruta, you have got.
Okay, Likita?
Did you think, Amma?
If I was a president, I would, I would want every citizen in India to be independent and all the people to be strong. And, and nice to have the animal. And not cut down many trees so we can, we can make our earth much beautiful.
Hmm, very nice. She's insisted on Bhuta Agnaya, huh? She'll take care of the Bhuta Agnaya, very good. Yes, Rakshita?
Amma, if I would be the Prime Minister, I would turn India into a stable and self-reliant nation. If I were the esteemed Prime Minister of India, I would try to present the mightest Indian force in the world. I want to do away with India's poverty and jobsness. I, I will also seek to achieve a literacy rate of hundred percent.
Very nice. So self-reliant India, right? Atma, Atmanibhar Bharat was another theme of this Republic Day as well. Where in many of the cases were already, you know, self-reliant, but yes, you know, there are lot more work to be done. Yes, Virat?
Amma, sir, if I were to be a Prime Minister for even a day. First things first, I would make sure that all of them were literate. They know about all the heritage that Bharat Mata has. Uh, whoever are Hindu, I would ma- make sure that maybe once in a week, they would get a free class from a guru of very high standards to explain them, the Vedas or something like this class. And next, what I would do is make sure that, uh, less deforestation happens. As a matter of fact, we, I would promote afforestation so that the greenhouse gases in the environment don't end up. Um, being too much for us and pollute. So that is one thing I would like to inform. And then, one last thing I would like to do is make sure that every world peace. Or at least I will have a good speech about why we should have world peace with other nations in the UN. And I would also talk and give speeches in India itself. Bharat Mata Ki Jay.
Very good.
Very good. So spirituality is the backbone of India, right? So it is important that all of us. Uh, make sure that we go back to a root.
Talking about Vedas, that's very good.
Meve Agnus.
Kushi? Kushi?
Amma, I want to give our Sanskrit. If I am to be the Prime Minister.
You're not audible, no?
Kushi, your voice is breaking. Yeah, come, come forward and say.
Okay, Amma, um, no.
Hmm.
If I am the Prime Minister, I would like our Sanskrit and Sanathan Dharm to be there. And I would like, instead of these schools, I would like to have Guru Kalam, so a system so that we can learn everything. Uh, like Vedas, slogans, yoga, meditation, et cetera.
Going back to our world customer.
Very nice, nice. All the, all the benefits of. Sai?
Amma, if I was the Prime Minister of India, first I would be joining the United Nations to make the world peaceful. And also I would follow the slogan, Loka Samastha Sukino Bhavantu.
Really nice. So that is something that we have always, it's part of our culture and our integral part of our culture, right? Loka Samastha Sukino Bhavantu is what we always go by. Very nice. Anybody else wants to share? Otherwise we will go to our next segment. Anybody else? Okay, so now, okay, so now we'll have a small puzzle, a jumbled words game that you can easily guess, okay? Or as to what these words are, okay? Okay, so. What is this?
Can you find out?
This is Hasini's letter.
Amma, this is Bharat.
Yes, it's Bharat, very good. So next, what is this?
Patriotism. Patriotism. Patriotism.
Very nice.
Constitution?
Yes, very good. When our constitution came into force, when our constitution came.
Nineteen fifty-seven, January twenty-sixth.
Yes, that is the specialty of Republic Day.
I made nineteen fifty and then came into.
Nineteen fifty.
Nineteen fifty.
Nineteen fifty.
Okay, so what is this?
Parade.
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 Very. This is easy.
Who made our Indian flag was designed by whom, you know?
Amma flag.
Who designed our national flag, you know that?
Pingali Venkaya.
Pingali Venkaya.
Pingali Venkaya Garu.
Yes, yes, very good.
Pingali Venkaya Garu, Amma.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, what is this?
Ayurveda, no, no. No, no.
Prasi.
Democracy, you said, yeah, very good.
Amma Krishna.
Very good Krishna.
Democracy.
So ours is a?
Democracy country because we vote, the leaders are elected through people.
And the largest, largest.
Democracy in the world.
Okay, so what is this?
Unity. Unity, unity, unity.
Then, okay.
Vandhe Mataram.
Vandhe Mataram.
Vandhe Mataram.
Slogan. Who gave the slogan, One Day Mataram?
Bankim Chandra.
Hmm?
Chandra.
Bankim Chandra.
One Day Mataram slogan was framed by Bankim Chandra.
Bankim Chandra.
Yeah, hmm, very good. And one last.
One. Jai Hind.
Jai Hind.
Jai Hind, who gave this slogan? Jai Hind.
Jai Hind, Jai Bharat.
Subash Chandra Bush.
Subash Chandra Bush, very good. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Amma, I have a question.
Hmm.
Um, lot of people say differently, but, um, does Jai Hind mean long, live India?
Jai Hind means?
Jai Hind means?
What is Jai Hind mean?
Jai Hind means long live, Jai Hind. Long live our country, Jai Hind. Hind here refers to our country only, short form. Okay, very nice. So it was a very good participation by, by all of you. Uh now, uh uh Swamini Emma wants to do, uh Subashitam. So we'll hand it over to Swamini.
Thank you, Samya. Sita, what a wonderful session we just had. So I could see that all of you are very proud Bharatians, now and you all know the meaning of Bharata. And you don't have to become a Prime Minister. Maybe you will, but in any field you choose, you can be a great influencer, is it not? As doctors, as teachers and as, you know, gym leaders, sports persons. In any field, you can very positively make a huge difference in your community and society. Yeah, but it was wonderful to listen to all the changes you want to bring. And especially I share Kushi's suggestion that I would really like to see the ancient Gurukula system coming back, which were, you know, unfortunately destroyed in invasions in the past. You know, we had such beautiful universities where academic and spiritual education went into hand in hand, you know? But how do we become a great influencer only when we know the glory of Bharat Desha, yeah? And we are knowing all that in these sessions, you know? Uh by knowing the richness and the glory of our heritage, then we will have that feeling, you know, what it takes, what it means to be a Bharatia. And then we can go through the contemporary times and bring in again the golden past back, you know? In any time in the future, okay? So you are all the future of Bharat right now. Okay, so our blessings to each one of you to excel in whatever field is your passion. And may you all become great leaders and great followers and setting an example in, you know, Dharma. And being instrumental in bringing back the Ramarajam. Remember I told you what is Ramarajam? You know, the glorious governance and administration, which a country that is free from um unhealthy competition, free from fear and theft and so on, okay? And I'm not, I have no doubt that each one of you is going to become, you know, a great in your field. So today I want to share a Subashitam. And you can all repeat also after me, some of you. So first, let me show you this Subashitam, which is uh you know, describing the glory of our Bharat Desha. Ratna Karad Houta Padam Himalaya.
Oh, what's this Subashitam?
Okay, good question. So, so means very good, okay? And Bhasitam means said. So a wise saying, you know, a very valuable wise saying is called a Subhashitam. And you have all, especially the older students, you know, have learnt a number of Subashitams in the past. And maybe this was also there. Yeah, Ratna Karad Houta Padam Himalaya Kiritinam Brahara Jarshi. Ratna Dhyaam Vandee Bharata Matram. This is not what we're going to learn today, I'm just uh showing you the glory of the Bharat Desha. So look at the Bharat Desha, our Bharat Mata is, you know, in the south. She, her feet, if you can imagine the whole Bharat Desha is a divine devi, her feet are being washed by the oceans. And at the head, she wears the Himalayas, the majestic Himalayas has a crown. And there are these gems like rishis and kings like Bharata and Shri Rama and all these munis and kavis, you know, adorning the, the head. And so unto that Bharat Mata, I offer my salutations, okay? Now we're coming to the actual Subashitam, which is this one, you know, and I would like Likita to repeat after me, after I explain it. Vinah Vedam, vinah Geetam, vinah Rama Yenim Katham. Vinah Vedam, vinah Geetam, vinah Rama Yenim Katham. Vinah Kavim Kaali Dasam, vinah Bhasham Samskritam. Vinah Kavim Kaali Dasam, vinah Bhasham Samskritam, Bharatam, Bharatam Nahin. So very simple Subashitam and it is talking about the glory of the land we belong to. So the, the land, you know, which our Bharat is glorified because of the Vedas. Because of Bhagavad Gita, because of the great Ramayana Kavi, Kavita. Because of Kalidasa, the poet, and because of the divine language, Sanskritam, okay? Now Vedas, how many Vedas are there? Short answers. Can you name them? Rigya Juna, Sama, Adharvana, okay, good. And Geeta, but you know, there are many Geetas, there's a Krishna Gita, Rama Gita. You know, Vyada Gita, so many Geetas. But when we say only Geeta, I'm muting Likita because there is some disturbance coming in. I will unmute you at the right time, okay? Geeta means Bhagavad Gita and you all know the Bhagavad Gita, you are all chanting chapter fifteen and chapter twelve so beautifully. And Geeta is the essence of the Vedas, you know, not all of us can study Vedas. And so we can study Bhagavad Gita. Then Ramayana, you all become experts in Ramayana now, thanks to Lakshmi Gauru. Yeah, you all are chanting so beautifully, Shuddha Rama and Brah today. And then, you know, all the verses very nicely. So Ramayinim Katham. And who has written the Ramayana, composed?
Uh Valmiki.
Adi Kavi Valmiki, considered the first poet in the world, okay? And the Bhagavad Gita is a dialogue between?
Krishna and Arjuna.
Very good, Krishna. And who's composed the Bhagavad Gita?
Vyasa Maharshi.
Yes, Vyasa Maharshi composed the Mahabharatam and there we have the jewel for the Bhagavad Gita. Then who is Kalidasa?
He was Aheem, the first poet.
No, that is Valmiki, right? I think Umar can tell us more about Kalidasa.
Emma.
You want to try, Umar?
Mom, I know, mom Kalidasa was a poet.
Yes, tell me, Vishwata, do you know anything more about him?
Emma, no, mom.
Mom, he's a poet.
Yeah, he was a great poet in the Gupta era, you know, for third, fourth century. He was a very simple guy, you know, not well educated. But he prayed to mother Kali and then he received her blessings and became Kalidasa. You know, the Dasa of Kali. Around somewhere in the Ujjain area. And then, you know, when mother blesses, he just became such a great poet. And then he wrote beautiful compositions like Ragavamsha and where there's.
Emma, can I share something?
Emma, this is Nitika.
Yes.
Ritu Samhara, I think was his first poem.
Yes, correct. Let me finish. So the Kalidasa is the poet where uh he has composed this Kumara Sambhava. Kumara Sambhava is the glory of Kartikea, Subramanya. And then there are Ragavamsha and Megadutam. So he's a very famous poet. And Sanskritam you all know, namo namaha, how to greet each other in Sanskritam, how to introduce yourself. The Sanskritam is the divine language with which we communicate to the gods. Every puja, don't we make a sankalpa? And all the sankalpas are in, uh in Sanskritam, stotras are in Sanskritam and of course our great Subashitam. So now what does the Subashitam tell us? These are the glories of our great land. These are not the only glories, yeah? There are many, many more, Mahabharatam, chess is the glory. So here it says, vinah vedam, vinah geetam, vinah rama yenim katham, vinah kavim kaali dasam, vinah bhasham samskritam. Bharatam, Bharatam Nahin, okay? So now we will chant this, a few, some of you can chant, first comes Likita. Okay, Likita, are you ready? Vinah vedam, vinah geetam.
Vinah vedam, vinah geetam.
Vinah rama yenim katham.
Vinah rama yan.
Rama yanim katham.
Yes.
Vinah rama yanim katham.
Vinah kavim kaali dasam.
Vinah kavim kaali dasam.
Vinah bhasham samskritam.
Vinah bhasham samskritam.
Bharatam, Bharatam Nahin.
Bharatam, Bharatam Nahin.
Can I get it on your own? Can you do, Likita?
You'll read, you know, manga.
Come on.
Vinah vedam, vinah geetam, vinah rama yanim. Katham, vinah kavim, kalis dam. Kal- kalidasa, vinah bhasham.
Bhasham samkritam.
Bharat, Bharat Nahin.
Bharatam, Bharatam Nahin.
I think the mother has also learnt, thank you. Thank you, Likita. Okay, now we will go to Hasini. Vinah vedam, vinah geetam. Vinah rama yenim katham.
Vinah rama yanim katham.
Vinah kavim kaali dasam.
Vinah kavim kaali dasam.
Vinah bhasham samskritam.
Vinah bhasham samskritam.
Bharatam, Bharatam Nahin.
Bharatam, Bharatam Nahin.
Very good. Next, we will have Albert Nitika, is she here? Nitika is here or no? Yes, yes, Nitika. Vinah vedam, vinah geetam.
Vinah vedam, vinah geetam.
Vinah rama yenim katham.
Vinah rama yanim katham.
Vinah kavim kaali dasam.
Vinah ka- kavim kaali dasam.
Vinah bhasham samskritam.
Vinah bhasham samskritam.
Bharatam, Bharatam Nahin.
Bharatam, Bharatam Nahin.
Excellent, thank you. Albert Vaishnavi? Can you do it on your own?
Yes, Emma. Vinah vedam, vinah geetam, vinah rama yanim katham. Vinah kavim kaali dasam, vinah bhasham samskritam, Bharatam, Bharatam Nahin.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, Virat, last one.
Vinah vedam, vinah geetam, vinah rama yanim katham. Vinah kavim, vinah, vinah kavim, kaali dasam, vinah bhasham samskritam. Bharatam, Bharatam Nahin.
It is kavim, kavim means poet, vinah kavim, okay? Very good, Virat. Okay. Uh okay, others can chant. Krishna can do one last time. Krishna, are you there?
Yes, Emma.
You want to chant on your own?
Yes, Emma. Vinah vedam, vinah geetam, vinah rama yanim, vinah, uh katham. Vinah kavim, vinah kavim kaali dasam, vinah bhasham samskritam, Bharatam, Bharatam Nahin.
Good, correct. All right. So this is the greatness of our great Bharat Mata. You know, so whenever you get a chance, you know, you should talk about the glory of our country to others, you know? And also learn more and more as you're doing now. Repeated study of the Puranas, of the Itihasas, of Sanskrit language, you can learn more, okay? And about our history also, hmm? And learn all these great Indian arts, you know, what beautifully Samya talked about, the Sari culture, you know? So you should learn about which handloom weavers are where in India, all the regional languages. Sanskritam, you know, we have luckily Sanskritam words in our local languages also, you know, Kannada, Malayanam, Tebu, Tamil. And some, most of them are there. Malayanam, I think maximum Sanskrit words we'll have. But you can also learn, take up Sanskritam language in the future and, you know, uh own up all these gems of our Sanatanadhara, okay? That's it from now, from me. Anyone wanted to chant? Do we have time? I think time is up, no, Samya?
They wanted to sing. Shall we ask them now or next week? The crazy.
Sing, you have not sung.
Yeah, Nitika and. Some way they wanted to sing. On their own, they said.
Okay, yeah, they can chant now, patriotic songs, right?
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay, Krishna, are you ready? Krishna. Krishna, I do not sing. Nitika, you start. Nitika, you wanted to sing, no? Unmute, unmute.
Oh, one second, let me give the unmute option.
Yes. Uh Emma, I, okay.
Come on, quickly, start singing.
Very nice.
Uh Emma, can I go, Krishna?
Yes, Krishna, okay, Krishna.
Hey Bharat Ki Ram Jago Main Tumhe Jhagane Aaya Ho. Hey Bharat Ki Ram Jago Main Tumhe Jhagane Aaya Ho. Saadharmo Ka Dharma Ek Balidan Bataane Aaya Ho. Saadharmo Ka Dharma Ek Balidan Bataane Aaya Ho. Suno Himale Kaidhu Aaya Dusman Ki Chandzero Mein. Aaj Pata Do Kita Paani Hai Bharat Ke Veero Mein. Khadi Shattru Ki Fauchwar Par. Khadi Shattru Ki Fauchwar Par Aaj Tumhe Lalkar Rahi. Soi Singh Jaago Bharat Ke Maata Tumhe Pukar Rahi. Rangki Bheeri Baj Rahi Hai Uto Moh Nidhyatya Go. Peena Sees Chudane Wale Ma Ke Veer Putr Jago. Balidano Ke Vajchandh Per Desh Bhakki Doja Jage. Rand Ke Kangkar Pene Hai Veera Chahed Ki Doja Jage. Agni Pat Ke Panthi Jago Shishateli Par Rakkar. Jago Sa- Jago Rakke Bhaklaatno Jago Sarke Saadhagar. Khappar Wali Kalhi Jage Jage Durkha Varpanda. Rakt Beach Ka Rakt Chaatne Wali Jage Cha Munda. Darmundo Ki Mala Wala Jage Kapali Ke Laasi. Gar Gar Naad Ki Maut Kehay Main Toho Pyasi Pyasi. Ravan Ka Vat Vahm Karunga Kehne Wala Ram Jage. Ravan Ka Vat Vahm Karunga Kehne Wala Ram Jage. Korv Seesh Na Bachega Kehne Wala Shyam Jage. Korv Seesh Na Bachega Kehne Wala Shyam Jage. Tiski Chhoti Si Lakuti Se Sanghi Ne Bihar Gaye. Hitler Ko Haraya Fajay Saath Samundar Par Gaye. Us Subash Ki Aand Jage Or Us Subash Ki Jan Jage. Us Chhoti Si Langhoti Wale Babu Ka Bimaan Jage. Azadi Ki Dulan Ko Jo Sabse Pele Choom Gya. Khud Gafan Ki Kaat Bandkar Saato Bhavar Ghoom Gya. Us, Us Bhagat Singh Ki Fasi Jage Us Rajguru Ke Pran Jage. Bharat Desh Maan Jage Ye Bharat Ki Santan Jage. Uh Emma, Emma, that was.
We've never heard this song before, something new. Okay, we'll end with Samvedya's song. Samya, are you ready?
Yes, Amma.
Yeah, Samya, uh Samvedya.
Kushie also wants to.
Yeah.
Yeah, after Samvedya Kushie, no?
Amma, shall I start?
It's Samvedya.
Jaya, jaya, jaya priya Bharat jana yitri devya daatri. Jaya, jaya, jaya sata sahasra naranari rudaya netri. Jaya, jaya, jaya priya Bharat jana yitri devya daatri. Jaya, jaya, jaya sata sahasra naranari rudaya netri. Jaya, jaya, sasya malasusya machala che naamchala. Jaya vasanta kusmalata charitalalita churna kuntala. Jaya madhiya rudaya seya laakshara na padayugala. Jaya, jaya, jaya priya Bharat jana yitri devya daatri. Jaya, jaya, jaya sata sahasra naranari rudaya netri. Jaya disaanta gattas kunta divya gana paritoshana. Jaya gaya kavaitaalika gala visala para viharara. Jaya madhiya madura geya chumbita sundara charana. Jaya, jaya, jaya priya Bharat jana yitri devya daatri. Jaya, jaya, jaya sata sahasra naranari rudaya netri. Jaya, jaya, jaya sata sahasra naranari rudaya netri.
Okay, good. Nice to see that we have a lot of enthusiastic and beautiful singers in the group.
I think Samya, rest of the singers, if they're there, can we have it next week?
Yeah, we, Kushie, can we have you next week? Comming sessions we have.
Whoever wants to sing, they can get a chance next week, okay?
Definitely next Saturday, okay, Likita, Raksita?
May I just tell a fact about our India?
What is that?
Can I say a fact about our India?
Who is that?
Here, okay, one minute fact.
Our India before was, was from another continent. It moved in the water and then came to our Asia. Till now it's trying to fit in, uh till now our mountain is growing and growing. We share small earth, we should happening over there in the northern place, northern Himalayas.
Thank you, thank you, Likita, for the fact. Can, okay, we can close this, conclude the session for today. Closing prayers, uh.
Yeah, okay, children, very nice, all of you has taken part with great enthusiasm. So let us see, sare jaha se acha, hindus da hamara, okay? Jai Hind. Now let us close. Om asato ma sadgamaya tamasodma jodhir gamaya. Mrityor ma amritam gamaya. Om shanti 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 hi. Thank you, children.
Om Amma, Bahama.
Jai Hind, Jai Hind, Jai Shri Ram.
Jai Hind, Amma, Bahama.
Jai Mataram.
Jai Shri Ram.
Thank you, Amma.